I find this work really hard.
Doesn't it?
I have trouble with it.
Do you?
Okay, all right, that was a long one minute. We appreciate you all being here. And we would like to welcome you to our city council meeting for Tuesday, January 4th, 2022. Let the record show that all city council members are present. We'd also like to note that there are members of the public as well as members of the city staff. And we'd like to welcome our previous mayor, Norm Searle, whose term ended December 31st, I guess. And so we're glad he's here as well. We've asked councillor-elect Hanson to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now take a moment of silence. As we do that, we ask that you might keep in mind our first responders in the city as they are out protecting the residents and people that frequent our city. We'd also ask that you keep in mind the members of the city council as they make decisions on behalf of the residents. Thank you. Next, we have a time for public comment. This is an opportunity for residents and others to address the city council and share any concerns or ideas that they might have. We ask that you come up to the mic and state your name and your address during that time and that you keep your comments to approximately three minutes. Seeing none, we'll move on to presentations and reports. Our first one is welcome and swearing in of the newly elected city officials. Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, Brayden. We don't get to see our judge very often. You guys rarely do. I see him quite often, but I thought it was kind of fitting and appropriate, especially in lieu of the significant changes we have and a new mayor. So I've asked our judge, Judge Paul Olds, just to give you a little bit of background, Paul had not served as a judge until we hired him. I actually knew Paul because when I came here, he was one of our prosecuting attorneys. So I'd worked with him quite a bit in court. And I knew a lot about him through that interaction and I knew what kind of an individual he was. And one thing that really weighed heavy on my mind was that Paul has sat on both sides of the fence, both as a prosecutor and a defense attorney. And I thought that was important if we wanted to give our court validity and fairness to individuals who come through here. So we took a little bit of a chance with Paul where he hadn't served as a judge before, but after, what have we been, two years now? We made the right choice. I'm really happy and pleased with how he's performed. And I think the individuals who have come here and even our girls that have worked with him have told me on numerous occasions that they were really pleased with how well he's done. So I did ask him to come down here and swear you guys in and then we'll even hear from you afterwards and kind of give you a State of the Court speech and kind of talk to you a little bit about how the courts have done. One of the other things is he's faced challenges that we've never, no one's ever faced with the coronavirus. And he's had to make a lot of adjustments. So he not only was a rookie in that regards, but he has been tried and tested and performed well. So I will turn the time over to Mr. Judge Paul Olds and he'll perform the swearing in. So maybe if we could have the candidates that are getting sworn in maybe over here. Well, you could do it from there if you want. You prefer just to stand there? We generally have them come over here. So why don't you come over here and then Judge Olds will take care of that.
All right, I just assumed to one at a time if that's all right.
I would be happy to see it.
Why don't we start with Ms. Hanson?
Just down here?
Yeah, that'll work.
All right.
No, go easy on me here.
Go easy on me.
I won't ask any hard questions.
Okay.
Let's see, do I have this thing on? Good, good, all right. All right, if you would repeat after me. Oh, sorry. Yes, of course, raise your right hand. And I think I need to do that as well. I state your name.
I, Annie Hanson.
Do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will.
I'll keep it shorter, all right? Do I do solemnly swear that I will support?
I do solemnly swear that I will support.
Obey and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Obey and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Of America.
Of America.
And the state of Utah.
And the state of Utah.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
That'll do it, thank you.
Thank you.
Brayden Councilman Stevens. All right.
I have a short attention span, so break it up into small.
We'll do it. I state your name.
I, Bart Stevens.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and obey.
That I will support and obey.
And defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the state of Utah.
And the state of Utah.
And that I will discharge.
And I will discharge.
The duties of my office with fidelity.
The duties of my office with fidelity.
Right, that'll do it, thank you. Congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you.
All right, repeat after me. I, and state your name.
I, Brayden Mitchell.
And let me throw this in, I realize that you've got a degree in microbiology. So we'll take it like this. Do.
Do.
Solemnly.
Solemnly.
Swear.
Swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the state of Utah.
And the state of Utah.
And that I will discharge my duties, the duties of my office with fidelity.
And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you.
My mic's messed up. I gotta make sure that we get signatures from all of you tonight. I'll have Judge Olds sign these so that he's done it. But you also need to do it for your certificates here, so don't slip out without doing that.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for being here, Judge. That was, I made it extra neat, so thank you. We'll now move on to the mayor's report. I've never done one of these before, but I guess, I guess I can do a little one right now, so maybe I will do just a little one. I'm pretty grateful for the opportunity to serve as the mayor. We have a lot of the city employees here and I appreciate them being here. And I, I've gotten to know them a little bit better over the last couple of months. And I'm grateful for all they do. And I'm especially grateful for the residents that we have in this city. They truly are the strength and the backbone of this city. And so grateful to work with this council and excited to see who the new person's gonna be. I think we have a lot of work ahead of us and a lot to accomplish and I look forward to working with them. And so I'll just leave it at that. We'll now move on to city council assignment reports. I don't think we have any of those for tonight. So with that, we'll move on to item number four, State of the Court Report.
And as I mentioned in our work meeting there, Judge, if you would give just a brief summary of the status of the court, some of the things you've experienced in last year, and also I'd like you to address Drug Court where our numbers have dropped a little bit and why and things like that. Anything you can update the council on that might be valuable because they don't get to hear this stuff very much, so. Right there, yeah.
This is, Steve mentioned, it has been quite a year. Twenty-five years of practicing law did not prepare me in any way for using WebEx, which is, as some of you know, is very similar to Zoom. Sort of going through our judicial process, similar to Hollywood Squares, presented a lot of challenges. The technology let us down frequently. There were times when the sound would go out, the audio, both audio and video would go out. We'd have bandwidth problems. WebEx sounds good, and it is good, especially from the city's side. But then you're also relying on the defendant's technology as well. And so we oftentimes had difficulty with hearing. People no longer walked into the courtroom, of course. They were at work or they were sitting on their couch. That alone presented some challenges. Not everybody took it maybe as seriously as it was initially, originally intended. I felt it was very important to conduct the court virtually as close as I could to the actual physical experience. And what that means is that WebEx has two different versions, at least two, actually more than two, three, I think. But the main two are meetings and events. And I use the program Events because it allowed me to bring people into that virtual courtroom in a status of an attendee where it, just like they walked in here, sat in the chairs, but didn't speak. When their name was called, I changed their status from attendee to panelist, then they would have the opportunity to address the court. When they were done, moved them back and, you know, essentially virtually out the door they went if they wanted to. But it was important to me to simulate the actual experience as much as possible. I was surprised that not all justice courts did that. There were some justice courts, so if you hear about this, you'll have heard it from me first, some justice courts actually called people. Instead of the people coming to the court, the court came to the people. And while that may sound good, that's a bad precedent. I actually had people found out that due to their non-appearance, virtually, they received a bench warrant and their response was, well, I thought you were gonna call me. And I don't believe that that's something that we want to continue when the pandemic's gone. Now, that's another, another issue. When we launched into this wonderful experience with WebEx, everyone thought that this was going to be temporary, and that was two years ago. So what we have learned is, one, it's hard to say what will happen in the future with the pandemic, so WebEx may be here to stay. And that's not a bad thing because WebEx has, well, let me give you a quick example. When I was in private practice, there were, of course, days when I had a court appearance in Logan, had a court appearance in Farmington, maybe another one somewhere in a justice court. Well, that's a lot of time on the road, expense, gas, all of that stuff. We can eliminate all of that to some degree. When it's a scheduling hearing, you show up for a new date of appearance in a criminal case, that's easy to do. WebEx is great with that. When we're trying to present evidence, when the, both sides are trying to present evidence, then it gets a little bit more complicated. But it works quite well with traffic matters. And we can play without much difficulty dash cams, body cams. And when it's a simple traffic, in other words, law enforcement, citizen interaction, it actually goes quite well. When we launch into maybe a small claims, when somebody wants to bring in 50 pictures, which has happened, then it gets pretty cumbersome and doesn't perform for us quite as well. But I suspect that WebEx is to some extent here to say, here to stay. I have been very fortunate to be the interim judge in a couple of other cities. When Pat Lambert retired, I was fortunate enough to get the interim position in Pleasantview and Far West and a couple of others. This was a great experience because it allowed me to see how others were doing things. And I can't tell you, I, it, how much I appreciate the ladies that you have working here in this court. I've been elsewhere and I've heard things like, because of what we have to do now with WebEx, it's too hard. It's too much work. It's, you know, easier to do it some other way. I never got any pushback from Mrs. Daley, Mrs. Lee, now Ms. Green. I am so sorry we lost Fran Olson because Fran was gifted at getting us going with WebEx when we needed a little IT help. But now we have Ms. Ray Lynn Bowman, who is working with us. Those ladies make, coming to work and operating the court enjoyable. And they are dedicated to the city and the operation of the court. One last thing, as if the WebEx experience, the pandemic experience wasn't enough, of course, our legislature decided to change some things relating to bail and the way that fines, we attempt to collect on fines and have made things a bit more difficult. And again, this court has operated like a, I, I think, and I can, I can say this based on my experiences elsewhere, has like a fine-tuned watch. And it's been because of those ladies, always wanting to adapt, always wanting to try something new. We tried, we made some modifications with how we operate WebEx just a couple of weeks ago. We may go back and not keep the change, but the beauty of it is, they were willing to try something new. So thank you for those employees. Anything, any questions I can answer? Did that completely bore you and?
Did you want him to mention about? Maybe just mention Drug Court, just briefly, Judge. I know, you know, they don't know, I put that in the report every month. There's a report from Drug Court. I don't know that you read it, but it's in my report, but our numbers have dropped if you've watched those. Again, that's nothing that we can control, but Judge Olds can address that a little bit. And I know he's even been working on that. But anyway, I'll let you take care of that part of it, Judge.
Our numbers are down, actually quite significant. We have had, it seems as though we've had more failures during the pandemic than previously. And those are just individuals that have just dropped out. And it's unfortunate. I'm, there have been a couple of individuals where they were in the program for about three, they were in a one-year program for about three years. And as a result, we didn't see sufficient progress and we let them go. But those were very rare. Most of the individuals just couldn't comply, just couldn't hang in there. Now, I couldn't tell you if this is just because of all that is going on outside of court, the pandemic. A lot of people have lost jobs. I mean, I know you all realize that most of the people that come through this court, whether it's Drug Court or our normal criminal calendar, these people work in the service industry and a lot of them have lost their jobs or it's been going up and down. They'll lose one and the next, I can always tell when they've got a new job because we get a payment, all right? So it's been, there's been a lot of ups and downs. But the Drug Court numbers are down. We have about eight participants right now. But these are people that are very committed and are doing very well. And if you would ever want to see the gratitude that comes from graduation, Mayor, Mayor Searle was at our, I believe, our last graduation that we had over in the park. And while I didn't do too well at public speaking that day, I guess it was, I was criticized my handling of the mic. Anyway, we had some people who had graduated and were very thankful of what the city has provided for them through that Drug Court. I, I think that going forward, I may be serving in some other jurisdictions and it is my intent to try and funnel people to this Drug Court, maybe from those other jurisdictions. And we're in the process of developing a policy. I don't want Riverdale to foot the bill necessarily, but I think Mayor Searle's always made it clear to me that this is a service that his administration, anyway, and may well be for Mayor Mitchell as well, believe that this is a worthwhile service that affects the entire county. And so I intend to try and bring some people in and increase our numbers. And like I say, we've talked about a policy for maybe some cost offset for that. Steve, anything else you'd like me to?
No, and I think that's a good summary of it. One thing that's a, an element of a successful Drug Court is intensive supervision. And so you can imagine, we have a team of people that volunteer for this program. They, they don't get extra compensation for doing this, including the judge. These people serve on their own dime and that supervision is intense. So you can imagine what COVID did to that. So it's amazing, we even have eight left, to be honest with you, because you take that element out of it and that's one of the main factors we have to have because our job is to change their lives. And these are people who may have been living like this for many, many years and somehow you've got to pull them out of that, which requires intense supervision. So you lose that element because of COVID, it's gonna be tough. So my hat's off to the judge and the team because they've continued it and it's still going. So credit to the judge and he's done a phenomenal job. And those people love him because of it. The mayor's seen this before, when you come to those graduations, which I would encourage all of you to take that opportunity, it's, it's an amazing program and the changes in these people's lives are shocking sometimes, so. Kudos to the judge on that one.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to consent items. We'll now have consideration to approve the meeting minutes from our December 21st council work session and regular meeting. Are there any corrections or changes to those minutes? Seeing none, a motion to approve would be in order. Counselor Arnold.
Move to approve consent items.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Moving on to action items. Number one, discussion and possible action regarding midterm appointment procedure. Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, counsel. This is just in regards to what we passed last time, which is now part of your council rules and procedures, and it's just the midterm appointment. I didn't know if you had any questions or concerns about how that's, now that you've had a little more time to look at it, I wanted to put that on agenda because this is the last chance we would have to make any changes if you wanted it. This does comply with state law. There's just one part that I have a little bit of a question on, not a question, the code is just not clear. And I think I mentioned this last time, it's written real, it's just poor. It's really bad. But we, we followed the, the elements of it and we are code compliant. But I didn't know if you wanted to make any changes or even discuss it any further. If you're good with it, I would say move forward. The, the one thing, and I brought this up last time, when we, when we take those votes, the one thing I want to do, at least at the end, if we hand out those ballots, which is what this requires, is that we read those publicly, just so, I don't want the public thinking we're trying to hide anything. We want to be as open about this as possible. So just so you keep that in mind, that's how we'll handle that. Those will be passed on to Michelle and myself, so we got two people watching over that and we'll read those publicly, just so you know, and that doesn't surprise you. But other than that, I think that's pretty tight, how that's been drafted, and I think we're good to go. But do you guys have any questions or comments or concerns about it?
Counselor Arnold?
I, I have one question. So if everything's supposed to be done in the public with public notification, right? We, I don't know if we should have any impromptu questioning prior to the packet, right? I mean, if we just spring a question on somebody or something, can they say this question itself didn't have proper notice? Because, and I'm just saying it because we have 10 questions that we did publish.
Right. I mean, there's always that element, but it wouldn't be any different than somebody comes in and public comment. We, we don't know what they're gonna bring in and you guys can fire questions back at them too. I mean, it's up to you guys. We could, we could just rely on the 10 if you want to do that. I, I just thought that you guys as individuals, because it does state that you will interview them, well, part of an interview is you're gonna ask questions. So, I mean, if you had questions, we could publish those in advance as well, but it was just a lot of work, so we kind of did both worlds there. We combined all those questions, so there's quite a few there if you look through those. And we provided you a packet tonight, so you have it and you have some time to look at that. But those will all be filled out. Now, whether or not anybody will answer all those, I don't know. I would be surprised if they did, but you'll have a lot to read before that next meeting. So I guess that's the, the chance we take. I don't know, I think it's fair that we have that opportunity to ask those questions because you don't really know what's gonna come up or what they're gonna respond back with. So I, I wouldn't want to completely eliminate that, but I would be careful with what we, we do do. Questions that are, you know, applicable to all people, I think, should be fair game.
And just to be clear, any question that's asked will be, have to be asked of all?
That is correct. Yeah, if we ask it of one, we ask it of all of them.
Okay. In the work session, Counselor Stevenson mentioned he felt like the questions in here might be weighted a little bit towards someone that had more experience. Is that a fair representation of what you kind of felt?
Well, that was part of it. And the part of it is, is this is, it's, it can be overwhelming to look at this if you're a candidate wanting to become involved and, and saying, you know, maybe I can give a shoehorn answer on a couple of these, but some of them, like, you know, what would I change in the city or what would I, would I like, anyway, some of it's a little, I don't know. I mean, I wouldn't change it now. I don't know if you can, but still, it's, and I use the word as a discriminator to differentiate between the various candidates. But anyway, it's a, it's a bit much and I, and I kind of think having some latitude with the candidates here, because everybody will be in the same room as, as we figure this out. Having latitude would be most appropriate.
I mean, the bottom line is, you guys have to decide what you feel is valuable and what's important. As a staff, we look at that, whether it's experience in municipal government or any kind of position. I mean, that's kind of what we were looking for is what, what do you have? What can you offer the city and what can you offer the council? Because we want to get a good qualified individual in here, but who decides that? It's you. What, what you place upon value is, is based upon what you get from responses and things. So we just tried to be as thorough as we can. We didn't even think about people with experience. I mean, like I said, we polled questions from all over the state in different policies. I had Stacy clean those up so they were, you know, HR compliant and things like that. So it wasn't intended for any, anything. We just threw it together to give you information is what we were looking for, so.
I, I just looked at this as, if I were filling this out, not having
I, I just looked at this as, if I were filling this out, not having been on the council already, I would be, I'd be overwhelmed.
Well, and I think some people probably will be, and some people aren't going to answer those. But, you know, when I've done interviews, I take that into consideration. If somebody's honest with me and just flat out says, I don't know, I don't hold that against them. I think those are valuable things to consider because I, I think all of us, at least I am in my position. I don't think I was the top candidate when I had interviewed for this job and position and still ended up with it somehow. I don't know what I said or didn't say, or whatever somebody else messed up on. But here I am, you know, 20 years later, so. We'll see. It, it's the first time we've done it, and certainly the first time we followed this policy. And this is state code, this is what we should be doing.
I do think it's a serious position. I think it, it, it does require some preparation and some knowledge. And I think the questions are, are kind of good, actually, to, to kind of weed out, like, who's serious about this? I know Counsel Hanson, I can call her that now, Counsel-elect, I can take that off of there. But I know she attended meetings beforehand, and I think all of us did. Most of us served on the planning commission. In fact, I had somebody that was kind of giving me a hard time about not having an opponent in the mayor race, you know, and, and I said, well, you know, I started about 20 years ago on the community council at the elementary, and then I moved to the planning commission here in the city and spent years on that. And, you know, 10 years on the council, so, I mean, yeah, I guess I just kind of walked into mayor position, something like that, you know, but, you know, I mean, obviously, someone felt like I was qualified to run and qualified to vote for, and, and so it's, and I think, I, I think the people that have asked me about the position, to be honest, I, there's a couple of questions that are a little bit tough, but, I mean, put down an answer. Do your best and, and say what you think. And, I mean, I think the budget one is one of the trickiest ones, but at the same time, we kind of need somebody that knows what we're up against. We want somebody that's put a little bit of thought and preparation into it. So I feel like it's probably the best tool, even if it's not perfect, it's probably a pretty good tool. But we do need to come to a consensus on if we're going to have some questions or not from the council, and if we want those in advance. What do you guys think? Counsel Hilton?
Yeah, I think at this point, given that some of our questions could simply be repeats or clarifications of some of these answers, it's okay to do it at the time. And we're going to overlap probably with, but we'll have to work that out. I'm going to come up with 10 and then pick at the moment for two. But once we've asked it of once, then that's our, that's, goes across to all the candidates.
Okay.
So we really just get two shots at this, and we'll see how it goes.
Okay.
And, and we will rotate those two, so the same person's not always going first, and the last person has the huge advantage. That'll rotate with each question, so.
Okay.
Trying to keep that fair. And, and just as an FYI, we've had a lot of interest. Only one has been turned in, but a couple have come in and picked up packets, plus it's online. So we've had a number of calls. So I would anticipate, I don't know, I mean, I would say at least five to 10 at a minimum. So you, you guys will have a busy night.
Okay.
So do we, are we going to read the questions and the answers into the record of what they put, or it's already in the packet, so it's on the record? So we can say, we've already read your answer on these. We're going to ask these two, or whatever it turns out to be. And then, or, so we're not going to go, okay, candidate number five, you didn't answer question number six, so answer question number six, because question, candidate number one did answer question number six. Are we going through all 10?
I, I didn't, I didn't plan on reading those into the record. We, we developed those to give you information. So if that's something you can rely upon to develop your own question and use to come up with one of your two, I think that would be ideal if you could fit that in somehow, just to give you some further information or something.
Regardless of how they come up in the order, we would have read the packet. So therefore, we, if we had a question for candidate number six, we could ask it to candidate number one.
Right.
Okay, gotcha, cool.
Well, we know the names of the candidates in the packet, or will they just be?
No, their names will be on there.
The names, okay.
Can we have the packet early to?
But I talked about that before you got here, Bart. Those are due on Thursday night before your meeting, just like usual. We will put that together Thursday night and even be working on it probably Friday morning. You'll have those sometimes Friday. So you'll have all weekend and Monday to look at that before your meeting.
So COVID, can we join in on WebEx? I don't have it.
Okay.
Right, chief?
It's going to be fun.
So the consensus then is we're going to still go forward, and you can do your questions.
Yeah, they can bring up to two, up to two questions. They don't have to have two questions, but you can have two questions.
Can you give commentary?
You know, again, that's up to you. I want to be a little bit careful about that, just because, well, it's, it's just a tough spot to be in, you know? And so I was trying to be careful to limit that as much as we can, but it's your discretion. You're, you're calling the shots here. So if you feel you need to, then I guess it's up to you guys.
Better not make your commentary in the form of a question, or there goes one.
Well, but if you do commentary, I mean, just, just to get an understanding of what you're saying, are we lobbying, or?
Giving a personal opinion on somebody, I think you'd make a great council person, something like that.
I, I mean, I think if it was a comment, I don't think that's a big a deal because we're not directing a question or anything. One of the reasons I, I wanted to look at the ballot thing was to kind of eliminate that rather than you guys doing a speech for one of them. You know what I'm saying? That was the hope, was to not do that, because I, I want the decisions to be made as a group, not as individuals. And somebody who might be a better speaker over somebody else. We want to get the best person, that's the bottom line. So whatever we can do to come up with that, that individual.
I would say, I, I think we should, like, no commentary. I mean, having a, I mean, to say, yeah, you're great, doesn't mean that somebody's not. But to sway somebody to who I know, or somebody, I, I think having a, I don't know if we're going to be, Allen's ballot says this, Bart's ballot says this.
That, that's what I planned on doing, is we, you know, Allen votes so and so, Bart votes so and so.
I just think having a sales pitch, I mean, which that kind of is if.
It could, it could be.
And that's what I was saying, I.
I think you're, you would be terrible.
And I, and I would really want to avoid that.
That's a commentary.
Right.
Right.
I, I think that should be.
It goes both ways.
I think that would be.
I would be really cautious about that, because that's one of the situations we go into a closed session for, is we start talking about individuals, whether you felt someone's fit or somebody wasn't fit. Those, we got to be careful, that could get us in trouble. So I was hoping to avoid that as much as we could, to be honest with you. That's the, that's the attorney speaking at this point, so. Yeah, and that's what I didn't want to do.
I mean, yeah, that would be.
Right.
So no commentary?
So no commentary.
I would rather than we didn't, that's my preference.
You never just say, don't do it. You always give it up to us to make the decision.
Well, you guys still call the shots. I can only advise you, whether you choose to listen to me or not, that's up to you, so.
Okay, so if you make commentary, your vote's out.
Okay.
That's all I had on that, Mayor.
All right. Moving on to item H, comments. Any comments from the city council? No? Okay. From the city staff?
Two things just quickly, and you should have received invitations on both of these. If you haven't, make sure you contact me tomorrow. Erlene Lee was one of them that the judge mentioned. Erlene has put in 23 years. Now, I don't think all of those have been with Riverdale, but a good portion of that has. She did work for us part-time and South Ogden part-time at the same time. But for the last three or four years, she's been with us full-time. But Erlene is retiring, and that's why we had made that new hire and shifted some things around. And Fran left and went down to the church office building. But Erlene's retirement party is January 13th, from 2:00 to 5:00 o'clock, if any of you want to show up and come in and tell her thanks for that. The other thing was, you remember the Raising Canes? That is this next week. So we have that scheduled to open, and they sent out, we used to do this a lot in the grand openings that, on that first day, they practiced on us. You should have received invitations today, and, and you can bring whoever, so many invites and stuff. Make sure you contact me if you didn't get that, because those did go out today, and we want to make sure that the council has the opportunity to come. Because they practice on us, I think, on Monday, and then they open Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Those are going to be a real busy day, so. We want to make sure we show up because we got to test them. That's how they learn, before we open it up to the public, so.
Is the ribbon cutting still scheduled for Tuesday, the 11th?
I haven't heard anything different on that.
That's in the, kind of early in the morning, right? 8:30, okay.
So any questions on any of that? Andy, did you, you probably didn't get an invite.
I'm in a sender mine.
Okay. And make sure you respond back to that and reserve your spot, so. Get you some good chicken strips.
Is that a commentary, that they're good?
You know, they actually are good. I went to Raising Canes here about five or six months ago for the first time when I was down in South Carolina. The, the crowd scares me, because I know they have a big following, and I've mentioned this to you before, the traffic over there is going to be a nightmare. So be prepared for the calls, because people are not going to be happy. But I contacted Mr. Hanson today, and he's contacting, if he hasn't already, on some of them, all the neighboring businesses, just to let them know, hey, we're going to have this going on. We, we've tried to figure it out where we can get to those smaller businesses without affecting them. But it's still, it's going to be packed, and it's going to be crazy. So there's only so much we can do because of that location, but I think we're ready to go.
Well, we have started our traffic control on this same day as the grand opening.
Not on the experimental day, but on the days that it opens to the public, they will be in place. And they're hiring, have they contacted you, Scott, on some of your guys? So they're hiring officers to, to perform that, plus they'll have their own people, and there will be signs all over the place. We, we sat down, went through all that. So you'll see those as you come over the bridge, and as you're coming the other way, there will be signs saying entrance here for Raising Canes and all that kind of stuff. So it'll look a little crazy for a couple of days, but we're, we're doing what we can do. We'll see how it happens. That's all I have.
All right. I had a couple of things. With me being sworn in as the mayor, we'll need a new mayor pro tem. When, will, will we wait till we have our full council to do that?
That was one of the things I was going to talk to you about tomorrow, but I think we probably should wait until we have that, that fifth council member. That's only one more meeting.
We could do it next, next meeting.
Right. We could do it that night, and I can put it on the agenda if you guys want to decide that night.
I think we should decide as soon as possible.
Michelle made note of that, so it'll be on the agenda next time.
The next thing, we also have an acting city administrator. And at some point, we're going to need to decide what to do about that. And I wanted to ask, is there a way to do a closed session without you there to discuss, you know?
Absolutely.
Your performance?
Yeah, you can, no, that's fine.
And it would just be the council?
And I won't be offended, so.
Yeah, well, I mean, we kind of got to have you not there.
Yeah, no, and that's fine. And if you would like, I can get another attorney here to give you advice on that. Andy Blackburn, who I work with a lot, who's Roy's city attorney, actually went through this kind of stuff himself, so he's pretty versed on these kind of things. If you want, I'm sure I could get Andy over here.
That'd be helpful, make sure we stay, stay within the, you know, the lanes where we're supposed to be, but.
Yeah, that might be a good idea.
At some point, we're going to have to discuss this, you know, we'll get the next council member on too. But just, just for down the road, just be thinking about what we're going to do and how.
I'll get that scheduled.
We'll have to have a, a closed session in one of those meetings, okay?
Yep.
All right, and the last thing I have, just a fair warning for Christmas. My family gave me a gavel, and it's engraved, it says Mayor Mitchell on it. And I didn't bring it tonight, because I, I wanted to warn you first. I'm excited to have the judge here, I might go get some lessons from him. I'm going to watch some YouTube videos on the proper use of it, but I'm just warning you that I'm going to have the gavel here, and we will keep things orderly.
Give it over to that chair.
I've been scaring my family with it. It's pretty loud, so it does a good job, so we're going to keep things under control here, so, okay? With that, I have nothing else, so we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned.